I'll second that.
With those changes?
With the changes.
Got it. We perfect. We'll go ahead and make those changes on the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Our first action item is a discussion regarding the Three Gate Trail and the W F R C grant. Ms. Russell, you're here with Mr. Wilkinson. Go ahead.
So Commissioners, we were fortunate enough to be awarded a grant for the Three Gate Trail Implementation Study and Market Analysis. The grant total is going to be two one hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. And this is a letter of concurrence and match agreement. The county has agreed to match this grant thirteen thousand five hundred and forty dollars. So just wanted to let you know that we got awarded, we've committed to a match, and we're gonna need a signature and Crockett just inform me that that will need to go on the consent agenda. So I'll get them on the consent agenda.
Place that for next week.
Yep, next week.
Great. Anything else? Commissioners, both Bowles questions? Commissioner Farrar?
No, I think we're good.
Great job. Great job. Good to pay thirteen to get a hundred and something.
I do have. So is that for design or what is that for?
No, this one's just for the market study and analysis. So we will be partnering with UDOT has created a new division. They've received forty-two million dollars from. They will be doing, working with us on the design portion of that. So we're waiting to find out if they're gonna prioritize this trail project. And I'm working with Stephanie. She's the new director of that trail division for UDOT. And we'll find out if we get prioritized, and if so, they will fund the design and the construction of that trail.
How about that? That's good. Isn't that a nice mid-Christmas gift?
But they were excited that we were doing the preliminary market study.
So they're okay with this?
Yes, they were very excited that we, yeah, UDOT was, yeah, we're partnering hand and glove with UDOT.
Good to hear.
Yeah, so it's looking really great.
Great. Okay, if there's no other questions, great. We appreciate that presentation, Ms. Russell. Thank you. Mr. Crockett, anything you'd like to say?
Oh, good.
Okay, then our next thing, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to saunter for another ten minutes.
They'll move.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
While we're sauntering.
Again, we're on our work session after we've sauntered. We're on a work session on Monday, the eighth of April. We now go into a discussion regarding fencing for the C J C. We have Scott Mendoza, Sean Wilkinson, Bill Ross, Scott Park. You've excused Rod Lake, who's listed on the agenda. Mr. Park, I'm gonna actually ask Mr. Mendoza to lead out on this, please. Oh, Ashley, nice to have you here, too.
Scott Park?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I take that as a compliment.
Of course it is. Not as handsome, but yeah.
You ready?
We're ready.
Thank you so much. I will start here and let you just thumb through that very quickly. Those photos were taken by the contractor, Wadman Corporation. They represent the fence that's on the west side of the construction site. So as you can see, there are many, many trees that have just grown. They're not landscaping. They've just grown up and into the existing fencing. So as part of the contract with Wadman Corporation, they are they plan on putting in a six-foot galvanized chain link fence on the south side of the property. Under the current project, there's no fencing that's called for on the east, on the west side of the project. So what we found ourselves in a situation where all those trees have grown up in the fence, the contract calls for the contractor to remove all, all of those trees. But you can see how difficult that would be without damaging the fence. There's also landscaping that goes up to that fence on the west side of the project. So when we started looking at the contract, we found that the galvanized fence was what was called for and only on one side of the project. We decided that we wanted to come back to you and show you current, the current situation and ask you if you would consider, you don't have to answer this today, and I have some additional information for you, but the question here regarding the fence has to do with the difference between that industrial-looking galvanized chain link fencing. Those are just two examples. I know you're well aware of what vinyl-coated black fence looks like out there in the world, but I just wanted to provide two examples, so it's right here for you. What we're asking you today is to consider going ahead, removing the trees that exist along that west side, and they're grown up in the existing fencing and replacing that. And changing the fencing on the south side of the project from a galvanized six-foot chain link fence to a six-foot black vinyl-coated fence.
Black vinyl-coated link fence?
Yes. We've found that the cost, we were supposed to have gotten a bid for you to to have some really good numbers for today, but we haven't received that yet. Last week, late last week, what we found out was to go from six-foot galvanized chain link fencing on the south side of the project to black would be about twenty-four hundred dollars difference. The difference in cost to go ahead, remove the existing fence on the west side of the project and replace it with new fence that's black vinyl-coated would be closer to about fifteen thousand. We're being very careful not to, we didn't necessarily want to come back and ask for more money, but what I want to present to you is the fact that, you know, when we put together the budget for the project, we came up at about seven million one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. There are some pretty good cost savings that we've been able to take advantage of. A lot of them have to do with Ogden City's permitting process and the M O U that the county has entered into with Ogden City. And the sewer impact fee that was able to be waived. So that was, that was a very big deal to us.
That's like ten grand, wasn't it?
It originally, it was fifty-eight, six fifty. That was the first number that we got from the sewer district, and that's what we plugged into the budget.
Right.
So we have to date, we have a contract price of six million six fifty with Wadman Corporation. We've already received change order one, which was a deductive change order in an amount of about thirty-seven thousand dollars. So we've saved some money there. They had included one item within their scope of work that the county's going to take care of. The county's gonna take care of it on its own. That has to do with some, some audio equipment, audio and video equipment in the interview rooms, the C J C. So there's thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of cost savings there. Special inspections, we were planning on that cost to be about seventeen thousand five hundred. We're shooting for something closer to about seven thousand. So there's about eleven thousand dollars worth of cost savings there. The building permit, the cost that we saved there by entering into that M O U with the city was thirty thousand dollars. The state fee, we saved three hundred and two dollars. Plan review fee was nearly twenty thousand dollars that we saved by entering into that M O U. And then not having to pay that sewer impact fee obviously saved the county fifty-eight, six fifty. So to date, we have about a hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars worth of savings. Before you answer the question about fencing, I also want to present to you some information that has to do with soils. So before we start the project, we kind of dated you and let you know there was some uncertainty as far as the soils go. And we went out there Friday on site. And that's why we've asked Ashley to join us today. We asked Ashley if he would join us last Friday when we went up there. Wadman Corporation called and said that they've been, they'd been doing some exploratory type digging. On the site plan there that you see, you see the highlighted, the yellow highlight there? They took us around to each building corner and showed us where the existing ground was and where they thought they were gonna have to go to in terms of depth, to get down to natural native dirt. Some good stable ground. Where it's highlighted there, they had a hole dug trying to get down to native soil. It was twenty feet deep. So what they're seeing is, at that point within the building footprint, a twenty, at least a twenty-foot excavation.
Can you do a, either computer there?
Well, what they, they, nobody's mentioned peers yet. But what they're thinking that they'll do within the footprint is ask the county about going just down to native within the footprint. But then with outside of the footprint, under the site work, you know, like some of the pavement or the concrete, there's an option there where we don't necessarily have to take down or get rid of all the fill material that's there, down to native, and then refill. The geotech is saying that it's possible to take a foot or two away from the fill and then come back in with structural fill above that. But the geotech is also saying there's some risk with that. And if the owner is okay with the risks associated with not going down to native, going down twelve, sixteen, twenty-four inches, and then coming back up with fill, that's something that can be considered. It's we do take on some risk by doing that. So Ashley, I don't know if there's anything that you'd like to add to that, but what I want to present to you while we're here, asking a question about, well, presenting some information about savings and then asking if you're okay with us moving towards some nicer fencing than what's within the current scope of work. We wanted you to know that there's still that uncertainty, but as far as the geotech, he plans on being on site tomorrow. And the contractor would like him to be there every other day until they get down to native soil within the footprint and then do some more exploring around the site. And then the geotech will give us more information. But outside of the footprint, there will be some options, and those options will have to do with a degree of risk. And Ashley's agreed to kind of help us continue to kind of monitor, monitor that situation and, and help us understand what that risk could be.
Yeah, the way I understand it is our original contract with the geotech was pretty limited in how many visits he was gonna make. And then in looking at what's been discovered as they've dug down, it, I see value in having the geotech engineer there more frequently to verify what's there, what we're dealing with, and I think make recommendations is to, if he sees opportunities for cost savings by doing less structural fill under the pavement, which would be, you know, if the pavement settles, that's easier to fix than a building, you know? So those were the kind of discussions we were having on Friday was what is the possibility of having this geotech out there more frequently, like every other day scenario?
We did find out that those costs are in the range of six hundred to a thousand dollars, so very minimal.
Per day?
I know, for the, during the excavation of the footprint. So he was thinking another six hundred to a thousand dollars. He'd be able to, to join the, the crew as they excavate and figure out what the soils are really looking like out there. So not a lot of investment there, but we're glad that he's available and we're glad that the cost is.
Like that idea?
I don't know if you're comfortable answering a question about fencing and tell you no more about soils, but that was the original intent of today was talk to you about fencing and the differences, the aesthetic differences between the two fence types and the the situation with those trees growing up in the fence on the west.
Then you get into the rest of this. This is what Commissioners, opinions, opinions about, before we go back to the fence, let's go to this. What are you thinking?
Well, I think basically the decision is on the, we, we want the geotech there every other day, right?
Yeah.
Which to me is no-brainer.
Yeah.
For, for, I can't believe it's only that much money.
We're pleased. I'm doing it's a favor.
Oh, yeah, it's a huge favor, something like that. Seventy, sixty?
He's been out there every day and like they'll dig down and things will look good, then they'll find some garbage or trees. He'll say, go another foot, go another. And he knows how important this is, and right now they're trying to determine how the hill drops off, because that's what happens, is everybody comes and pushes all their stuff over and it gets buried. So it's important that he's there, and he understands the timeframe, too, so he wants to, he wants to just hurry this project along and help us as we need it in real time to save time and money for him and us, so.
That's good. Yeah, I, I don't see an issue with that. First one.
Yeah, let him know to keep him coming.
Yep.
Fancy, Commissioner Bowles.
Well, when you were presenting the fencing and the difference in costs, my, my first thought was what about the additional costs as we move through the project? Yeah, it's, it's pretty minimal, but you know, we might be coming back for, for changes and increases on other things and.
It's true.
More than likely.
I mean, I don't know, is it an urgent decision?
We do have an option, but.
I had one more thing, too. So if you go up there on site, the west fence is the, the fence that goes along, you know, the, the school district has their arena, and that's the parking there. And so the fence has mostly been destroyed because of those trees, so even if they took it out, the fence is destroyed. So at some point, we're gonna need to replace that fence anyways. So it's just, yeah, now we got a good pricing and opportunity to do it, which will help secure the site as it gets going. And but eventually we're gonna have mainly, she's running on the C J C thing with all the public availability with, with that whole white rock parking lot right up to our facility that we're trying to keep private anyways, so it's kind of inevitable, we're gonna need to do it. It's just keeping it within the construction cost, but.
Yeah, that, that's a really good point, because Rod has been doing some research and found, he called the One Fence Company, asked them the cost for the additional fencing. It was fifty-five dollars a foot. Wadman had made a call. We don't have that bid yet, so it's not on paper and nobody's committed to anything, but the call that they made was more along lines of forty-dollar a foot if we go through Wadman Corporation. So there is about fifteen, ten to fifteen. Ten to fifteen dollars worth of savings by working with the contractor that's on site now. The other option that I just want to mention is it's possible that after the project ends, say there's a ribbon cutting and it's complete, there is this kind of a wreck of a fence on the west side. Rod thinks it, and you know, after the project is over, he'd be able to pursue getting some private donations, some funding for that fence. He thinks that's doable, but that would be after the project's well and done, that he would take that on. So we don't know when that would be complete, but there would be a time where that fence would look a mess.
Well, the fence is compromised now according to officials.
Yeah.
I would say that's, I'd, I'd like to wait a little longer. They're gonna be pulling out trees and compromising the fence even more. And let's just, let's just, I'd, I'd like to wait a few months before we make this decision.
If the whole thing's coming in under budget, then we go, right?
There you go.
But.
It's a no-brainer.
Okay, we'll just keep working on what we're working on, and we'll come back to you and when we know more about current soil situation and we know more about other possible changes.
I have heard quite a bit of chatter out there through the home builders that the peer situations come way down on pricing. There's a new peer technology that has brought construction costs way, way down. So this may be an option to just do some of these things, but take some of those corners and screw those in or however they're gonna do it.
We'll learn a lot more. If you're ever out and about, just go in that back towards that lot. It gives you good sight that, that you can drive right up to the fence and you can see the site, too, with instead of trying to stop on the.
I noticed that the last time we were there, I just, these trees are a mess. Boots on the ground. So does this compromise any of our current construction? I mean, so if we, I didn't say if it starts getting in the way of any type of overruns because of conflicts, take the thing down.
The only conflict would be with the landscaping that does go to that boundary, which is that fence.
Okay.
So it.
So we've got time.
Yeah, they can work on trying to get rid of everything on the east side of that fence to allow for landscaping.
Great.
Okay.
Any other questions, Dash?
Nothing.
Not for, on this topic.
Thanks.
Wait, though. We got another one coming up here shortly.
Well, if there's no other things, then let's keep moving on then. Let's go, uh.
Thank you.
We've got work. We're gonna keep moving, Commissioners. The next one, we'll ask Sean you to stay. Uh, so show Sean Wilkinson, Charlie, you were. Rick Grover, Cortland Erickson, and Bill Cobay in for a discussion regarding development agreement for Craig O'Burg. Uh, you folks in the back of the room, if you'll identify yourself.
Craig O'Burg, Ron O'Burg.
Great, welcome.
See ya.
We didn't know we needed to sit outside, but it was kind of fun.
Public meeting.
You're welcome to. Let me see what we've got here from staff. Uh, you guys can come, I guess, at the end of the table over here if you'd like. We've already introduced the meeting. If you want to go ahead, uh.
I've got some handouts here and like to.
Mr. Cobay? Go ahead. Keep passing it down. You know, I'm good at that. Take one down. Give him a copy of that? Yeah, I'd like him a copy of that. You related to Brett Ober?
No, no, I know there's a couple clowns around. Mine's about disappeared.
Okay.
But she's related to a lot of people, she's a Shaw.
Oh, those Shaws from the valley, we know about you. That's great.
A tough one.
All right, commissioners, thank you very much for your time this afternoon.
Don Shaw subdivision, it says right here at the top of this. I'll tear down, that's great.
This is a, uh. Proposed development agreement between the county and. Mr. Ober, who is the applicant on this. And subdivision, as you see this in. In this document here. Right now he's got three different lots. That kind of center around Shaw Drive and, uh, North Fork. Is that Shaw Drive?
No.
Street, I'm sorry, Shaw Drive is another. What he's trying to do is, is a couple of different things. First off, we'd love to, uh, preserve those three development rights that exist along. The roadway to keep these three lots that you see outlined in red. Known as lots three, four, and five. And make sure that those are buildable legal lots going into the future. Lot numbers three and four on the plat have already been built on. Lot number five has a barn. But they would like to be able to preserve that, a right to develop that into the future. Um, for a, a potential single family detached dwelling. That's not currently being sought after, but it is something that they would like to reserve the right to do online in the future. Parcels A, B, and C that you see indicated in blue on the property. And, and this is part two of the proposed development. Are to be dedicated to, uh, or, or to have a conservation easement recorded against the property so that they will never be developed out. County feels like this is in our best interest and is in keeping with the, the provisions in the general plan that look forward. Forward to, um. Preserving this kind of open space and, uh, keeping that clear and open and making sure it gets. Put into an easement so it's that way in perpetuity. We had some conversation with the planning commission a couple of weeks ago. Um, they're in favor of this. They've made some, uh, minor changes to the development agreement itself. And, uh, what you have in front of you reflects those changes in the actual document here. This one. Cortland and I have been over this and, and we both agree that this isn't a, a good. A, a good condition that we feel comfortable recommending approval of and is in keeping with, uh, planning commission's review and, um. Their, their comments and concerns. And so we feel like this is ready to get in front of you guys for a decision. There are a couple of remaining outstanding items that will need to be addressed before we schedule this for a meeting. Specifically the exhibits in the back with the legal description and an actual proposed plaque. They're just being kept blank on the back in anticipation of those coming through from the, uh, the property owner and, and their surveyors. So, um, what you've got in front of you, we'd like to have you review for, for, uh, the, the actual text. And then we'll get you revised and, and clarified exhibits that will go with this before we go to a public hearing.
Commissioner, uh, Roar, this is in your portfolio, comments or questions?
Thanks. So the three existing lots, are they currently legal lots?
They're currently. Potentially, we, we haven't done a full review of them to determine if they are a, a buildable parcel, but, um. Like I said, the two have already been built on and the other, the third one has a barn on it. Um, so that.
You got two with homes on now?
Correct, lot three and four as indicated on here. This lot and this lot have homes on them. This one just has a barn. But as, as mentioned, he'd like to preserve the, uh, the right to develop that into the future.
All right. So I guess we'd consider lots three and four legal then since they've already got homes on, right?
Potentially.
Correct or not?
Yeah, if, if there's a, if there's a house on it and the house predated nineteen ninety-two and the lot boundaries predated nineteen ninety-two event, it would be considered a lot of record.
Okay, that's, that's kind of our, the sticking point though, is that the lot configuration has kind of.
Right, been adjusted, changed.
Right, massaged in the interim. And so, um, this, this. Um, subdivision, once it goes through, would, uh, clarify all of those points. And, uh, bring everything into the light of day.
Okay, that makes sense. So. The conserve, conservation easement property. Doesn't appear. I don't know how you'd ever develop that.
You have to build roads to get into.
You got access from?
Not, not right now. So if they were to develop it, yeah, they'd have to build a road to get there.
Right.
There is an ingress, egress easement indicated here on the plat that comes down from.
I see that.
Oh, on the left side?
Yeah. Through the wetting property over.
Agricultural easement.
There probably is.
Naggie, but that's not, yeah.
But it would be a, a matter of, of converting that, working with the, the property owner there, the lens and getting that to, um.
Yeah, turn it out to a road or whatever.
The idea is that this, they don't want this to happen. They don't want this to develop.
Right.
So.
All right, that's the reason why they would turn it into a, uh.
Conservation easement.
Yeah, one question, one question too, and, and maybe, uh, this is a question. For the O'Bergs. But before I, before I take that there, I'm still trying to learn here. Most of the lots up there, if they're not three acres there, they were usually one. I realize if structures were built before nineteen ninety-two, that they would be, but why would? Each one of these, and I'm thinking about more specifically about lot number one, which isn't highlighted. But also lot number two on there, why wouldn't they just go into parcel B, grab a little more acreage just for giggles? And make that one point oh one acres. On lot number one and two, you could almost pie shape out one or two or.
Oh, lot one, is that the Don Shaw subdivision?
Lot number one is Carolyn S. and Kevin Hoag listed on this. Uh, I just wondered why you wouldn't, why you wouldn't. Have made those one acre lots. But I am, you know, the fact that the planning commission. Was okay with it. I don't know how much angst I'm gonna have, but I just now, I'm, now I'm asking a question so I can learn here. This is a question for me to learn. Because obviously the one is forty thousand square feet. It's a little short. When the other, the other one looks like it could be a little short based on what I'm seeing on the other, just. Just it, it's not, this isn't a hinge point for me, but it's a, a question. No, you're just, yeah?
I, no, I, I think they could easily do that. I'm just not sure how willing they are. And that's probably a question for the.
Can you answer that question?
Well, the Kevin and Carolyn Hoag, we do not own that.
Okay.
My sister lives there, there's a house. And that's always been a buildable lot and that house has been there since nineteen sixty.
That's, that's been there quite a while.
There is a, there is a home on lot number one or.
That's your original home.
Yeah, it's, it's not worth it. I just was wondering.
So the simple answer, it's actually a three acre zone, not a one acre zone. A lot of the one acre.
But because they were built before.
Nineteen ninety-eight, yeah. And it's not technically one acre. Uh, it, it was forty thousand square feet at the time. So the forty thousand.
So it was a legal conforming lot at the time.
At the time, yeah.
The home was built.
Yeah, got it.
So that's a non-issue.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioner Faror?
No, I think, uh, so really the way I look at it is. We, we need to make sure that conservation easement is detailed out in. The development agreement.
Correct.
So if we're gonna do, basically the way I see it, we're making a trade for what I'm gonna call an illegal or non-conforming lot right now. In exchange for having that in an easement, that's how I.
And, and that's what this would memorialize.
Right, so we're gonna do that. And, and just to clarify, the planning commission's looked at this?
Yes, they have, and it was unanimous.
Okay. That's unusual.
If the development agreement doesn't say it now, um, we'll make sure it does say that, uh, prior to the flat of these three lots. Because being recorded, then the easement will be conveyed to the land trust.
Great, thanks, Napoleon.
I like it.
I think you have a, you okay that? You have consensus from this body to move forward.
Thank you.
There you go.
That was easy. Every once in a while you get the easy one.
People just come in and talk to us.
The question was to get the entire family. On board to put the piece near the river and across. We own it, we own the two of the pieces, but the, the other piece. They're all in favor. So then our neighbors are in favor. And we're hoping that once we do this, we can talk a few of our neighbors into also.
Great. Thanks, good seeing you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll look back with you.
Okay, commissioners.
Thanks, Commissioner.
On our agenda, this takes us to item number six, which is at two fifteen. We're right on time discussion regarding the Utah Bay Dam rehabilitation. Ashley, you're gonna stay in here. And Sean Wilkinson, Gary Myers, where is Gary?
Right here.
And Cortland, always, always Cortland. And Scott Parks, excuse me. Go ahead, if you would please, uh, Mr. Ashley Coleman.
Yes, yes, thank you, Commissioner. So, um, what we wanted to talk over with you today, just in preparations for future. Public meetings is a contract with Weaver County through the NRCS, um, to have work done on the. Utah Bay Dam. Um, this has kind of been in the works for a while. Back in twenty twenty-two, there was a grant given for six hundred thousand dollars to have this work done. Um, with that agreement, we moved forward. We put out an RFP for this work to be done. Uh, the results of that work was a potential contract with the consultant, France and Civil Engineers. The, with the cost of that work, uh, we needed to ask for additional funds from the NRCS. And so we've put in that request. And now we have, uh, an agreement to add money to this original six hundred thousand dollar grant. This additional money is seventy-four thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, to, to meet what the consultants asked for, for this work. And so I just wanted to present this to you that in a future commission meeting. Will present this contract between NRCS and Weaver County to have this work done. Or to receive this grant line. And then in a later meeting, because then NRCS doesn't sign first. They ask the county to sign the agreement first. Um, so we'll ask you to sign it. We'll send it to the NRCS, have them sign it. Then once we have that fully signed, that agreement. Will present the contract with the consultant to do this work. On the Utah Bay Dam. You have any questions?
I do. There's a con, there's a little project up there regarding some of the lot owners that sit immediately adjacent to North Fork Park. Um, and they have an easement through that area. Liam Keo is more familiar with that. If you. What I'd like to do is make sure that you have a conversation with Liam. It may be an abandoned easement. But I want to make sure that there's no wrench being thrown into this down the road. That, because this has to do with litigation, actually, that were, was taken up. A year or two ago by those landowners, uh, about North Fork Park. And so just make sure it's all okay up in there.
My understanding is that there will be a new descriptive easement that will be recorded, but Liam will.
Just to help.
So the concern is that we not move forward in a way on this project would somehow interfere with or mess up. The other situation.
As long as those are protected, I think you'd be okay to move forward. I just want to make sure that everyone's aware and this doesn't come up as a. Oh, you know, you're halfway through it, money's being spent. Oh, by the way, then it becomes something that the county now has to put in money for. To protect something that's not even ours. And it's been going that way ever since, you know, so.
I agree. Okay, we'll, uh, we'll cover that with Liam and then make sure. As this agreement makes it through the contract portal, that if there's a legal issue, it's held up with. We won't proceed to present it until that's resolved.
Great, Commissioner Faror, being in your portfolio. You know, you've been up there. I know you've been up there and had your feet on the ground up there.
Boots on the ground. We were a little wet. So are, are they gonna add some additional material or what they doing?
That's kind of what this work is to determine is what work is needed.
Okay, so this is basically the report to tell us what we need to do.
Yeah.
So if we ever get in floods again, okay.
You were quite concerned about Utah last year, Gary.
Significantly, yeah, that, that particular spillway is in really, really rough shape. And it spilled for quite some time through the duration of the season.
Yeah.
We were nervous just how that concrete was gonna hold up. And it did surprisingly well. We had a little bit of smaller repair work we had to do afterwards, but it kind of. Did better than I thought it would.
They put the Lord's concrete mixture in it.
They do have a good partner up there, the, the camp keeper, Scott Blank.
Yeah.
He keeps an eye on it and he, he's like, oh, it does this. It flows like this all the time. You know, this is normal and, you know, we were nervous, but he kind of said, I'll let you know when I think you should worry.
Both guys are, those guys are so valuable.
They, they know what they're doing. Yeah, he's, he's great. He really let us know when there's something to worry about. We went and looked at some water that was coming through some. Uh, vol holes down below and made sure, you know, we didn't have concerns about some running water down below, but. Yeah, it's, it's been great. They, he's been great to look out for us and work together and.
And he was always so good to work with us, to give us access, even when the snow was still there. Cause that's a much shorter walk through his property than it is all the way around. So. Great, great guy to have relationship up there. Scott's amazing.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Bollos. Dang, well. There we go. Does that help you?
Yeah.
Any questions on that?
Just double check the concern with the litigation and then hopefully see if. Not tomorrow, but next Tuesday.
Right.
Ashley or Gary, Scott Park just asked for an update following this work session.
Oh, yeah.
Just so he understood what was going to happen and what was going on with the contract.
Yeah, I went over with this, this with Scott on Thursday.
Okay.
And, um, I'll let him know kind of the timeline of what we discussed here.
Thank you.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Damn, there's nothing else, then thank you very much. Please come again. Okay, our next one, commissioners, is just about ten minutes off, but it's a discussion regarding. The interlocal agreement with the Weaver Morgan Health Department. If Ms. Harris or Mr. Quinney are out there, will you invite them in?
Absolutely. I don't, I don't see her, so.
Okay. Christie, we're ready when you are. We'll entertain a motion to saunter until that they show up. So move. All in favor?
I, I will saunter. I, I will saunter.